Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Any adjustments to the agenda? Review and approve board minutes of September 9th. Does anyone have any adjustments on the minutes?
I would like to offer an adjustment. That's, um, I'm looking for it here. I think it would be 6EW NSU Board meeting review. And it's just a spelling. Lynn, Lynn Blackman Nitschke. That's L-Y-N-N-E.
L-Y-N-N-E for Lynn. Is that right?
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Anything else?
I also have one on page three. I asked for student reps, not student reports.
Could I have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
I'll make a motion that we accept the September 9th minutes as amended.
Anybody in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Motion approved. Communication and public comments. Area community TV media proposal.
All right, this is really short. Okay, so, uh, you know, part of public access is to provide live broadcasts to, um, community facilities, uh, in our service area. So we had just recently, um, won a negotiation deal with Comcast. And that's gone through, so they provided us with the funds to be able to, uh, upgrade, any sort of major community facility like, like the high school. To be able to purchase, uh, specific equipment, um, to allow these facilities, not only so that we can broadcast, um, out to our public access channels, um, but to, um, uh, lay down those, they call them a remote site, to lay down those sites. So, um, just highlighting you on that, and as, you know, to be a remote site, we go live through the internet, and that would be the choice to, um, to create, um, a solid video connection through the internet, uh, and then purchasing specific devices. And one of the areas that we would like to be able to do that and pay for the cost is, uh, the auditorium, to be able to run a sort of a solid ethernet line under the carpeting or something like that, and, um, have that, uh, in the middle of, you know, where we usually set up a camera. You know, and then also, in addition to that, to work with the WNSU, um, or whoever your IT guy is, to be able to set up, um, so right now, we go live on YouTube, but we would like, and it requires, um, the person that manages your, uh, network, to be able to set up these devices, so that, um, that live video broadcast will go directly to our media server. So, and this, this is also for other, uh, WNSU buildings that, that want to do that. And, I mean, I'll go to each board meeting, or I can talk to you, Chris, about sort of set, kind of setting that up. And I do need to talk, you know, spend some time and kind of, um, schedule a time where I can come down and we can have a discussion about what areas that, I mean, obviously, what areas, um, would you, where we can set up a, uh, an internet connection, you know, maybe there is an internet line in the gym, um, you know, to be able to set up a solid line that people can have access to, and the station can have access to, so.
And hard wiring is preferred?
It is, yeah. It's, um, I can purchase technology for, uh, for wireless, which, you know, we hate wires. I mean, we try to, however, it's dependent upon your network and your wireless capabilities. So that's something that we, these are kind of the, the details that we can discuss and figure out what the best solution for this facility is.
Yes, so I think, you know, you can go through Jen Cravino to schedule, um, I would be happy to be involved, Jim DeBell would want to be part of that conversation, Jamie Danseroe and Ricky Adams.
Yeah.
We get all of us together with you.
Absolutely.
We'd be able to kind of sketch out options.
And so the second part of that is to maybe just seed an idea, but it would have to be a conversation, you know, with you to see what the needs of the school are, what you, what you feel like you can handle or manage, and whether or not this would be something that you, you know, you would, um, would like to do.
Yeah.
And that would be, quite simply, I mean, like, you know, we're limited on staff and resources, but, you know, our purview is to try to connect, you know, the community through video and provide training and so on and so forth. So with the limited resources and staff, you know, one of my solutions to be able to eliminate some of those barriers, to be able to, um, get more students and faculty and people in the community involved with video production, is to try to figure out ways with organizations like, like, you know, the high school or the WNSU, to be able to, come up with some sort of partnership whereby, so you have these remote live feeds that we're going to be installing, is to figure out, um, you know, what kind of camera equipment, if willing, that you guys would like to purchase, uh, that you guys own and manage, whereby, based on what the needs and what you think you can manage and the use that you get on the students, whereby, I would consult, I would provide the training if needed on or off campus, I would troubleshoot, Fact TV would provide that, provide the consultation for purchasing the right equipment within, within the budget and within your needs. And to, so you would have, sort of, maybe write it down, something, you could have a studio here if you want, if you wanted to go big, it just depends on what your needs are, or you could have a couple cameras like these. A lot simpler solution where you just, maybe if you have like an event, uh, at the auditorium, and you want to go live, and you have the student that's trained or the faculty member that's trained, you can just plug in the camera, call us up, we schedule that live feed in, and bam, it's live on Fact TV, we can put it out on Facebook, sort of creating awareness to school, if you wanted like a small little sort of studio that students and faculty can use, uh, you know, very cheaply, can use, can do like a little news highlight of the school, maybe get some training on some video broadcast, um, those options are all available. So the idea would be to come up with a solution, talk to you because you're the one, you know your school better than anyone else, you know what people are willing to do, figure out something that you, you know, whether or not it's doable, start off small with one camera setup.
Yep.
And see, you know, this is working, people are using the camera, I got enough. The other goal is like, you know, sporting events, we can't cover all the sporting events, but we have some great events that we could highlight, the community will want to watch. And if you guys had the equipment available, someone on the team or an assistant coach, you know, they could take out the equipment, they don't have to, it's the location barrier going to Fact TV, taking out the equipment, going through all that stuff. You can film the events, we would figure out a way to easily make it turnkey, so when people are done filming, it can offload on the computer, and we can pull it, put the graphics in what's needed, and distribute the content. So that's like kind of the big goal and the big vision, so hopefully, you know, we can come up with a way where people have the tools right here and available, and we can help assist sort of getting that content out.
Sure.
And that would be, you know, more detailed discussion with you on what you feel is necessary and with faculty and staff, but I just wanted to kind of seed that idea.
Yeah, sounds good.
I'm sure you have my number, but.
I bet I do, but I'll take that since you got it.
So yeah, just give me a call, we can work out the remote site stuff, but, um, if you can go into detail, and if you're interested, we can propose something to the board. Funding's an issue, I do have things lined up, uh, possibilities for, you know, sponsorship, to be able to maybe provide the seed funding for the school, that would be something that I think people would be interested in sponsoring, to help the school out.
Sure.
So there's, there's those options too, so.
Good.
All right.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you, guys, take care.
Thank you. Policies, do we have any policies? You have a shop?
We don't have any policies, but just a quick update of the policies that we just got through looking at, and keep in mind, these are all hoping to be through SUI policies, so we're not dealing with a half a dozen different, uh, policy manuals. So just recently, we looked at conflict of interest policy, board agendas.
Can I just interrupt for one moment? Isn't it, uh, your report first, and then principal, business manager, and then policy update?
Thank you. Number five says policies.
Oh, I'm sorry, policies, if any, I did not see that, never mind, sorry.
Continue. Firearms, weapons, and the federal nutrition wellness policy. So the committee has gone through those, we, some of these were just up for revisions, some of them were adoptions, for instance, the conflict of interest policy, even though it's, it is a policy, we haven't had one, and so that was, um, went through the readings. Firearms and weapons, they've been separated, so in the past, we've had firearms and weapons policy, but they were one policy encompassing both, so those were first and second readings. And C9, the nutrition wellness policy, that was just a revision. So that's where we added the policies.
Chris, your report?
Um, just a few updates, we've had quite a bit of professional development going on throughout the SU. We have, um, measured academic progress, the new local assessment that we're, common local assessment that we're doing for K through 10, K through nine this year and K through 10 through next year. We've had, uh, we'll have some more professional development in a few weeks. The most recent professional development we had around the, the measured academic progress was really showing the teachers, you know, how to dig down deep into the data that they're seeing from it, to make better decisions and based in challenging their students in the classroom based on the data we're seeing. So that was one of the professional developments we have. Another one that, um, we had the first round of last week was the partnership that we have with Landmark College. This is the one that we sent one regular ed teacher and one special ed teacher, um, through our professional development center and worked with Landmark College, and last week, they met about understanding executive functioning, cognitive overload, and classroom applications, and that's going very well. The other day, we had, um, another round of professional development for the middle school and the high school around restorative practices and T.O. One circles, and the whole basis of the T.O. One circles is building relationships and better communication with our students and each other, and that's going very well. It's the first time we've, in the past two times we've had it, we've had the middle school and the high school come together, and this time, we separated them out, with the high school stayed here and did their training, and the middle school was, were at the middle school. So, um, I was able to attend both, it went very well, um, and it's going very well, and very, um, excited about what we're doing here in the SU in regards to restorative practices. And, um, Friday is tech boot up day, tech boot up day, for those of you who don't know, it's, um, everything revolves around how we use technology in the classroom, and there are very, there are various pullouts where teachers can choose on what strands they want to go to, and then I believe for this SU, this is the fourth time they're having it, and so that'll be Friday, and, uh, I think that's about it.
Anyone have any questions for our superintendent? Thank you. Chris, principal's report? So a couple of topics to cover, um, first of all, the fall sports season is wrapping up, um, boys and girls soccer, both made the playoffs, they had away playoff games, and unfortunately, they weren't successful there, but I will say, for both programs, they probably had as successful overall seasons as they've seen in a while, so, um, we're excited about that. Cross country wrapped up this past Saturday, and, uh, the boys did a great job, they came in, I think, third or fourth overall, third overall, um, and the girls won another state championship. So another banner is going up in the gym, and I believe we had, uh, I think we had the number one runner in Division Three, or, is it the number one runner in Division Three?
Yeah, repeat at her time.
Abby Brody was, um, the champion in Division Three, um, for our high school, so, um, and we are graduating no one from that team, so things are looking good for next year. We're not going to order two banners for the price of one, we'll wait and let the season play its way out, but, you know, we're bringing a strong team back. And field hockey and football, as always, have strong programs, they are still in the playoffs to Wednesday, um, the field hockey team goes off to the second round of the playoffs, and I have to tell you.
Semi-finals.
Right, and the, um, there's not necessarily a, uh, I mean, there is a number one seed, but there's not a team that hasn't lost at least four games, so I would say that it's anybody's, anybody's prize to be had. We, um, upset South Burlington in the first round of the playoffs, they were the number three seed, we were the number six seed, that was the team that we beat in the state championship so that bodes well for how our team is doing. And football, we'll be taking on U32 scheduled right now for this Saturday, um, excuse me, this Friday, but, um, we're trying to be proactive about the weather, so, again, right now, it's Friday evening up in the Montpelier area, but their field isn't in great shape, doesn't take water real well, so right now, we're trying to figure out how to manage that best, so.
And Chris, when you say the field hockey semifinals, the next one is?
Right, that's in Middlebury, um, and they've got the six o'clock game. If you follow field hockey, what has happened really for the past five or six years is, regardless of the seed, the semifinals are always played on turf someplace, so they have a 4:30 game in Middlebury and a six o'clock game in Middlebury, and then the championship is also typically at UVM on artificial turf, so, um, so that's.
It's this, this week at Middlebury at 4:30, what day is that?
Actually, it's six o'clock and it's Wednesday. And if we win that.
It's against CVU, the number two seed, and if we win that, we go to the final on Saturday in, at UVM.
So that's fall, and for the first time, we put announcements out about signing up for winter sports today, so we're trucking along. And the other thing that I'll talk to you about, and this has to do with the handout that I gave you, so we had our college and career awareness day on October 16th. On that day, um, the freshmen go to visit a college, Castleton, which Abby Brody went along with the freshman academy team on that. We do PSATs for both the 10th and 11th graders in the morning. In the afternoon, the 10th graders go to the career center, and I have to tell you that Scott Farr, the director there, was very pleased with how our students actively engaged in what he had to offer, he was psyched about that. The 11th graders, well, let me talk about, the 12th graders get a kind of smorgasbord of things to do. We let students plan with their parents to go on college visits on that day, because sometimes that can be difficult to do, um, and we have a number of activities here related to transition from here to the career force. We have a visit set up with the National Guard to go explore those options, um, we have folks who are working on their senior projects, we have folks that are working on resumes and college essays, so that's, again, seniors have a range of things for them to choose from. The afternoon for the 11th graders is this, what's referred to as the financial reality fair, and what I've given to you, just to give you a sense for that, is every 11th grader, um, we start in the auditorium, we have, um, a number of representatives from a variety of credit unions in the area come and kind of run the show, um, and everyone is given one of these, and what this is, is a budgeting form, but if you take a look at this particular side of it, it tells you what your randomly assigned career is, and it gives you a lot of the important information that goes along with that, your annual salary, your monthly pre-tax salary, your take-home pay, your credit score, um, and then on the other side, is a lot of information that you will take the next couple of hours to go around in the gym and visit stations to, um, determine what your housing situation is going to be, how you're going to manage the cost for food, your cellphone, your entertainment. There is a table to go get another part-time job, so if you aren't happy with your current income, you get to go and work with a couple of staff members there who support you in figuring that out. Transportation, there's a table for that, and the folks who work those tables, part of their tasking is to be that person who gets a commission off of your apartment or your car that you sell, or, you know, try to talk you into that, um, phone plan that you don't really need, but doggone it, AT&amp;T or, or Sprint or whoever would really love you to spend lots of money on them. There's a table for financial counseling, there is a table for, um, there's, um, Speedy John's Pawn Shop or something like that, where you can go get some more money by taking out a loan, there's a credit table, the kids really engage well with that, and what I tell them is, your challenge is to go through, and if you take a look at the colored side of the paper, the ones with the Rs, those are required lines to fill in. So if you take a look at the Rs, there's housing, there's renters insurance if necessary, there's transportation, auto insurance, gas, taxes, nightlife, food, clothing, you've got to go visit those tables and make some decisions around that. Most of the students, early on, realize, if I get a roommate, that makes the housing that much easier, so they usually like pair up or triple up, I think that's the most you can do, um, and what I tell them, their chore is to, um, establish a lifestyle that you genuinely want and have money left at the end of the month. And they really engage in that, yeah.
What is the wheel of reality?
Oh, the fun, it's, so what happens is, there's, again, so it's a fun activity as well, they each get to go spin the wheel once, and it will have things like, um, you know, your, uh, you had a car accident, and, you know, you have good insurance, but the deductible is $250, so you've got to factor that in, or it might be, um, you bought a lottery ticket and you won $100. One of the things that happens when you do that, you only get to spin it one, but you get this raffle ticket, what the credit union folks also do is, at the end of the whole activity, they draw for two, like, $50 gift cards for the students to something, so that also kind of makes it fun for them. So, um, again, this is the third year that we have done this, and it really kind of captures the students' attention, they spend, they invest a lot of good energy in this, and by the way, it's great for, um, you know, we have, you know, students with significant disabilities that have paras that take them around and pair them up and go around, and they get a lot out of it, just like the student that is heading off to, to medical school ultimately, but maybe they were handed, um, preschool teacher, or physical therapist, or environmental scientist, you know, they get randomly given their, their career path and they run with it, so.
That's cool.
So, that's my report. Thank you. Any questions for? Well, by the way, I'm happy to have these back unless you want to take them with you, but we'll just collect them at the end when.
I think I know some adults that could do this.
I'm sure. Any questions for our principal? Thank you, thank you, Chris. We'll move on to Edie.
All right, let me pass these out, I'm sorry, they're not pretty, they're handmade on Excel out of the accounting system. Thanks, Mom. Here's a coffee if you want one. So, we're getting there, we're almost done with last year, um, last year's reconstruction of the general ledger, um, for six of the seven districts, and, um, with everything with the high school, you ended up with a surplus of $94,275.77. Now, there is a bill back from the SU for, um, thanks, um, for, um, tech services and for, um, the 504 secretary, um, but, um, that was $21,757, so that would come off of that, which leaves you $72,518.56. However, once we get the SU totally done, and the surplus that is in the SU will be redistributed back to the schools, um, so you may end up being right back around the 90, 94,000, so, um, I will keep you posted on how that goes, but we're, we're finally getting there. The, the software does not print, as you can see, a decent report, it actually spits it out in, um, Excel 2003. But, um, we're dealing with it the best way we can. They are designing reports for us now, we've been getting some assistance, um, for, um, you know, having trainers come in, we're going to have more training, um, and hopefully, through all of this, they'll figure out a way to speed up the software, because right now, it's incredibly slow. Any questions?
Looks like none, thank you, Edie.
Yeah, you're welcome, sorry that it's taken so long.
No problem. Uh, committees, we've had kind of a policy committee update already, Chris?
Yes, we're good with that.
Okay. And scheduled building and grounds meetings, we just had a walk-through. Went through the grounds, Chris, you want to speak to this? Yeah, so, um, pretty much every year, we make it a point to, um, take buildings and grounds on a walk-around, particularly as we are approaching our work on the budget. Again, the facilities are in very good shape, um, that certainly stood out to us as we walked around. I would highlight that the tennis courts, even though it feels like we may have just recently done some work on those, they are, um, very close to do for some more attention, we pointed out some of those spots when we walked around. Again, whether or not that needs to happen before we have a next tennis season really kind of depends on how the winter goes and, and how, um, the frost treats that space up there, but, um, if you walked and looked at it now, the, really, the places that are the worst are right near the nets, which is where the ball generally doesn't land a lot when you're playing tennis, so, again, if you look at it right now, you could play tennis on all four courts, and you're not going to do any damage, and you'll get true bounces and all of that, so, but it's definitely, um, sooner rather than later, going to need some attention. We talked about the track, the track is approaching what was its advertised useful life when we redid it about 17 or 18 years ago, but if you look at it, it is in no way, um, yeah, some folks were around for that, and you go, 17 or 18 years ago, it's, and if you recall when we did that, they gave us five-year increments of, every five years, you probably want to redo the surfacing of it and the painting of it, and we've kept to that cycle, but after three of those, they said, probably time to redo the whole thing. We are at that point, and it still looks good, so we're keeping an eye on that, but no, no panic button to be pushed on that. The press box up at the football field, if for no other reason, needs some attention because we have more and more interest of folks who want some press box time, and, um, we had a playoff game this past weekend, and there was a web-based sports entity that was broadcasting it, and there really wasn't room in the press box. We set up a good spot for them up on the bank, it's a great view, and it worked for them, but, um, that is a spot that probably needs some, um, some attention, expanding that press box, if not taking it all out and putting a new one in. But again, if you talk in terms of, is it working, it's getting the job done, we are able to do our announcing from there, we're able to run the scoreboard from there, we just aren't the great hosts that we might want to be in terms of the space there. We walked down around the backfields, um, there has been some conversation about the possibility of putting a concession stand back there, but again, that would be more of a community-driven thing than, um, than driven by this board, just because it's, it's way low on the priority list, but functionally speaking, there'd be a lot of good use out of it, I think, so, something to think about. We walked on the stage, took a look at the auditorium, um, the sound system could use some attention, um, we are pro, when we redid the stage, that is resurfacing it, um, they, it was clear that that was the last time that was going to happen, so before we need to redo the stage, you know, strip it down, refinish it, that, we would need to replace that, but again, no one's going to fall through that. But again, no one's going to fall through that on our production of Mamma Mia coming up here in the spring. So, again, these are things that we are commenting on, paying attention to. But the big-ticket item is the wastewater flow and the driveway and the parking lot. Later on, on this agenda, I'm going to ask you to approve a bid for the engineering work on that. And that will then give us a sense for the cost for that, along with the overall nature of that work. And I think I've mentioned to the board before that this may be the budget where we ask the taxpayers for, you know, to support a loan, a bond, for the money to pull that off, but more to follow on that. So anyhow, that's our walk-around.
Someone asked me if the, if what the policy is on animals on the playing field, because they said they had seen a lot more animals lately, dogs being brought with people coming to them.
We are not super strict on that. So we just expect folks to clean up after themselves.
Okay, so there's no specific policy?
Right. There are some signs up there that basically ask you to kind of curb your pet, you know, but we do not prohibit that from happening, you know, kind of the standard societal expectation on keeping, you know, your dog on a leash and cleaning up after them. Now, that's me. If Sean Burke was here, he would probably tell you something different. He's our head custodian. But we understand and support that pets are part of the family and, you know, that if folks properly, you know, again, meet those standard expectations, there's not a problem with that.
Mr. Clark, WNESU Board Meeting Review.
Okay, WNESU, there are really only two items, well, possibly three, that rise to the top. First off, we had a pretty comprehensive food service presentation. And I have to tell you, if you were in the room, I think you were quite impressed by Harley Round's overall of how that's going. Certainly, you may have your own insights here in this building, but certainly, it looked to me like a place I would like to go for breakfast and lunch. And I believe that we're not tremendously underwater, about $38,000, maybe?
Yeah. Around that.
Okay.
I think we walked away with $2,000 in the black, actually.
Yeah, but we budgeted with all the schools to gather $180,000 local share for assessment. We were worried it wouldn't, we would eat that up plus more, but we didn't.
So we're doing well, both programmatically and financially. We did discuss the establishment of a transportation committee to look specifically at the busing. The suggestion was that we go out to the local districts to see if we can get some board members involved. I mention it here because we did have the conversation. My sense is it may be more relevant to the elementary, middle school level, because by the time it gets here, many of them are driving themselves to school, which is less common in the elementary and the middle.
Pleasure in biking distance.
And we did have a discussion about possibly finding a new site for the SU offices. That's still ongoing at the SU. We could go into executive session tonight for an update. I would recommend against it, because it's still, you know, a fluid situation. And certainly, if there's anyone sitting at the table who has more of an interest, I would once again encourage members to attend the supervisory union board meeting, because all board members in the district are members of the supervisory union board, although each school has only three votes. So there's your SU report, Molly.
When is the next meeting?
Well, that's a matter of discussion. It's tentatively the night before Thanksgiving, but I think it's likely to get moved up a week.
Probably, you're trying to probably move it up, I think it was, to the 20th.
Thank you, David. Unfinished business or discussion, is there any? New business for discussion? Ratify support staff contract.
Today, because the last meeting was canceled, today, all the other boards have ratified the support staff contracts. We're just looking for the high school boards to do the same with the support staff.
So we need a motion for that?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we ratify the support staff contract and direct the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded.
We have a brief review of the support staff contract. What does it involve?
So the big changes, and anyone from the committee, feel free to jump in. One of the big changes were, let's see. So one of the biggest ones was that kind of held up negotiations for a few meetings was we really wanted to get additional supervision on all the school buses. And so one of the ways we were able to accomplish that is adding another, adding $2 onto their hourly wage, going from $1 to $2, in addition to whatever their current hourly wages. Because past practice was, is that it was in the contract, but it wasn't really being enforced in regards to having support staff riding the buses. So we worked the language on that a little bit to, so now we are in agreement that we'll be able to get support staff on the buses, making it more attractive and actually having people step up to do it is a different thing. So we're in the process of, right now, trying to figure what that looks like in regards to which buses need the immediate support. Anyone from the committee, what was settled on, on the percentage? Does anyone recall?
I'm trying to remember.
Well, it's in the, the dark is in the packet.
Oh, it is, yeah. It doesn't exactly state that. It gives a list of the new staff wage schedule. It's listed on the second page.
It looks like this. If you're looking in your packet, there's a summary of support staff.
Page 10, I believe, is the wage schedule.
That doesn't indicate how the current contract was changed.
Gotcha, yeah.
No, it doesn't.
I guess that's not important, is it?
It is, but it wasn't listed.
It would be kind of nice to know if we, if it's noble.
Does anyone from the committee recall what?
That's what I'm trying to remember.
That would be.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do. It's been a few weeks.
I want to stick my neck out and say that I believe we went with an overall increase of 2% across the board on a one-year contract and that the health insurance terms remain unchanged. And in the next breath, I just want to comment that as far as the statewide health negotiations go, they are now going to binding arbitration, so hang on to your hats.
So the specifics are as followed. There's a 2.5% increase on the support staff. Also, the paras are also, in part of the agreement that they agreed to, paras were required to attend all profession, in-house professional development opportunities and in-service days. The supervision was added to the bus, and then we went from $1 per hour to a $2 differential for those support staff. And that was pretty much it. There were a few things taken out that, because in regards to unions where they can't force, they cannot charge non-members a fee, so that was taken out. And that was pretty much it, 2.5% and just a few of the other items.
Thank you. All those in favor of ratifying the support staff contract? Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Do you mark me down as abstaining?
Approved bid for engineering design work for the driveway and drainage improvement.
So I've handed a number of these out to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. I have additional ones if folks would like to look them over, but we have bids for the engineering work to be associated with our wastewater management improvements and our driveway and parking lot paving project. Again, the starting point for all of that is this engineering work and both the understanding of the scope of the work and the cost. So the two bids were from Dubois and King and Stevens and Associates. Dubois and King had their foundational cost at $15,300 with some alternates to add in, including a topographic survey for $3,700 and underground utility locating services at $2,000. If we take a look at Stevens, their estimated total was $9,650. They had some optional services of $2,800 for investigating and base data phase for the subsurface and an allowance for the excavation contractor of an additional $1,000. In short, both of the proposals met the expectations of the bid. We recommend that we go with Stevens and Associates, and we did do reference checks as well. And Stevens and Associates was the lower cost, met the expectations, and received good reviews. In particular, I believe Jim talked with Frank Rucker for Wyndham Southeast, who have used those folks, and they worked well with them. So again, our recommendations is Stevens and Associates. But I do have multiple pages of their bids if you want to review the details.
Go ahead.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go with Stevens Associates for the estimated improvements and engineering design for the driveway at $9,650, estimated total.
Do we need to add the other two figures in?
Well, I think it wouldn't be bad for us to be prepared for, to have the option to go to the top end, which is $13,450, which is still below the base of the other folks and keeps us below what is the bid threshold anyhow, so.
What Mr. Hotson said, I will go with.
Motion's been made and seconded.
This bid is for reengineering for paving of the?
The driveway and the parking lot.
And the parking lots. The parking lots as existing currently?
Yes.
No, not any additional parking space?
It's not our plan to change that footprint.
Okay. How about on the sort of apron around the building or the?
Does not include that work either. So this is blacktop and making sure the water doesn't make lakes like it's been doing.
Okay. And so, and not the sidewalk right in front of the?
No, well, we've done the sidewalk right in front of the school within the past five years.
Okay. I was just wondering, what was in the scope of it?
Right.
And not going up to Hadley Field?
Not going up to Hadley Field, nope, nope.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second the motion. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Motion's been made and seconded to approve the bid for engineering design work for the driveway and drainage improvement. It is going to be Stevens and Associates. And the amount was?
$13,450.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any appointments, Mike?
I do not.
No need for executive sessions?
There is not.
Director's comments.
I have none.
Colin?
I just want to say that over the last several months, our fall sports programs have been very impressive to, and it's just an honor to be a part of this board, but also live in this community. It's been a very, I've been very impressed. I've sat back and said to myself, you know, wow, you know, our students are, you know, we have really good athletes at this school, and it just, this little corner of the state really does shine when it comes to our sports program. So I just want to congratulate the fall program.
Deb?
No, I have none, thanks.
Steven? David?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
All set. Okay. Thank you very much. We have, if you need, if you want anything on the agenda for the next board meeting, just contact Chris or I. The next board meeting we have on the agenda is November 11th. There is no school that day. We would like to change it to November 25th.
And that's the next possible date, because Rockingham has the prior Monday taken up and the Monday after the 11th taken up, so that just leaves us with the 25th.
25th is the fourth Monday?
Yes.
Want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.